Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, June 22, 2017, regular session of the Xenia City Council. We've been in executive and special sessions since 5:30 this evening, and we are ready to begin regular. At this time, we will have an invocation by Pastor Barb Schnecker from Faith Community United Methodist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Mays. If you would rise with me, please, for the invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for those who have joined us this evening in this city council meeting, and Lord, for your glory. We ask that all who participate seek peace, do good, and, Lord, walk humbly. We ask, Lord, for your guidance. Give each one who is in this room tonight a heart to seek for justice for all, to be inclusive in this community, and to show your grace among all God's people. For we pray in the name of the Divine One. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor Schnecker and Councilwoman Mays. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice President Smith.
Here.
Councilman Wallace.
Here.
Councilman Lauterback.
Here.
Councilwoman Mays.
Here.
Councilwoman Mills.
Here.
Mayor Bayless.
Here.
President Engel.
Here. Thank you very much. At this time, I'm seeking an approval of minutes for the June 8, 2017, special and regular session, please.
Mr. President.
Moved by the Vice President. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on the minutes, please?
Just one. It's just a typo at the top. It's got our special session at 7:00.
Ah, okay.
I think it was at 6:00.
Thank you. Special session moved to 6:00. That change noted. Any other discussion or question or updates to the minutes, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have an opportunity for a public hearing for the rezoning of a 1.876-acre portion of 856 Hedges Road. Mr. City Manager, would you introduce, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. The subject of tonight's public hearing, as indicated, is the proposed rezoning of a 1.876-acre portion of a parcel located 856 Hedges Road from A-1 Agricultural District to R-1A Family Residential. The applicant wishes to resurvey his property and split off the 1.876-acre lot to convey to another owner for construction of a single-family home. While a single-family home is allowed in the A-1A, five-acre minimum lot size would be required under the site zoning regulations. As a result, the applicant cannot create the new lot without either applying for variance or rezoning that parcel. The requested rezoning is generally consistent with ex-plan land use projections, and the rezoning is congruent with surrounding land uses. Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on June 15, 2017, and endorsed the proposed rezoning. Following the public hearing this evening, staff recommends introduction of an ordinance authorizing the rezoning.
Thank you very much. I will open the public hearing at this point in time, and anyone wishing to speak for this rezoning action, please step to the podium, provide us your name and address, limit your comments, four to five minutes, please. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against this rezoning action, please step to the podium, provide us your name and address, limit your comments, four to five minutes, please. On the subject of the rezoning, if anyone would wish to speak neither for nor against, but make a comment, please step to the podium, provide us your name and address. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at this time and seek an introduction from one of my colleagues for this rezoning action.
Mr. President, I'll introduce that.
Thank you very much. Introduced by the Vice President. This time, we have an opportunity for audience comments. If anyone would care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please feel free to do so. Step to the podium, provide us your name and address, limit your comments, four to five minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Myra McDaniel, and I reside at 835 East Market Street. And I thank you for an opportunity to stand before you this evening. First of all, I'd like to commend the city for the wonderful work that you guys do. Seeing the things going on around Xenia is very surprising, for one, and encouraging for the growth of the city and the surrounding area. I've lived out here for 18 years, and I had so many people ask, "Why did you move to Xenia? There's nothing going on in Xenia." People that go to school, get educated, move out of Xenia. So I have said that the Lord planted me in Xenia. I know why. Still don't know quite why. But it's been a blessing to be out here these 18 years. I stood before you last year and brought up a subject that was near and dear to my heart. There's some abandoned properties around, because I live down in the East End, and we had a problem with critters mainly. I am a gardener, and they were coming in and eating my garden and running all over the place. We have a problem with stray cats and all of that. But I want to thank the city for having a program that when you call in and let City Manager's Office know that you've got a problem with critters. And I've forgotten, it's Carly, I believe, that answers the phone, and she's been very nice. And they called the company, and they send out someone to put a trap out and catch the critters. So my heart is elated that they caught a groundhog one day that had dug up under my shed, and I said, "Would you please put another trap?" Because I think it's more than one. And the next day, there was another groundhog in the trap. So I'm grateful for the city having that program and taking care of that for me. Again, I said I'm a gardener, and 90% -- 90 to 95% of what I grow, I give away. I work at a hospital, so I take my vegetables in to my patients, to my coworkers, and to church, mainly who eats the vegetables that I grow. Secondly, I was out, I ride my bike also, and I was out on the bike trail coming through the city, and I saw a police officer had stopped his car and was cleaning up broken glass that somebody appeared to have purposely broken right at the bike path that goes from McDonald's area over to Xenia Station. So I stopped and helped the police officer as he cleaned up that glass. So I want to commend the officer for stopping and doing that. And with that, I would like to read Matthew 12, 7:12 says, "So in everything do to others what you would have them do to you." So at this point, I would like to address the citizens of Xenia. If you see something, say something and do something. We have a Green County Cycling Classic coming up next month, and we have cyclists coming in from all over the place to ride on these trails. I have brought a little brush to put on my bike, so as I go along and see glass where people have, again, I say I believe maliciously and purposely, broken glass on the bike trails, it is a horrible thing to be riding your bike and run through glass, and your tires go flat, and you go down and hurt yourself. So I am asking the citizens of Xenia, those that get out and walk on a regular basis, those that live near the bike trails, if you see someone throw a bottle or break glass on the bike trail, please say something to them, and if you can and will, go out and clean it up, or call someone so they can come clean it up. Because nobody needs to ride their bike and run through glass and be hurt, or have to try to find somewhere to get their bike fixed. I've run through glass, and thank God I was within the city limits, and I can just push my bike back home. And the other thing, Tuesday night when I got home, I was disturbed because someone had come and thrown trash in the bushes behind my neighbor's house. I live right off an alley. And I had a sleepless night that night because my soul was disturbed that someone felt so comfortable to come into our humble neighborhood and throw their trash in the woods and just leave. So again, I will appeal to the citizens of Xenia. If you see something, say something and do something, because it just boggles my mind that someone would just come into somebody else's neighborhood and do that. I did call the city and report it, because I was so disturbed, I didn't know what to do. I did get a call back from someone, because I called twice, but my neighbor behind me paid someone else to clean it up before the city got there, because I was so shaken, and I was willing to go in the woods and clean it myself. But it really disturbs me when people think it is okay to just pull up and stop and throw their trash on somebody else's property. So this is not meant for you guys. This is meant for those that would possibly watch it. Please, if you see something, say something, and if at all possible, do something. If you can't say something to the person that is doing it, because at this day and age, there are some strange people out there that may try to harm you or retaliate some kind of way, call the authorities. But don't just let it happen. Because I live up on the East End, and some people think it is not the best place in the world, God planted me there 18 years ago. And I want to thank the city manager for stopping by one day after I had come by last year, and I was so happy to have him come in and just sit and have a conversation. So thank you for your time, and thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please?
John Calp, 936 Orville Way. I'm happy to see that the four-plus-year ordeal of Bridges of Hope and the Simon Kitten property is somewhat coming to a close this evening. It's been a contentious four years, at least, to say the least, on that property. I'm a little disappointed, though. Couple months back, when I was at a meeting, you had three opportunities, or three different potential uses for that property. One of those uses was a private corporation that would have dealt with, I believe it was foster children, would have brought 15 jobs, tax-paying jobs, to the community, and would have purchased the property for a much higher price. My question with the contract is, really falls under Section 1, 2, 3, 4, basically through Section 7. They're going to purchase the property for $25,000, but what's the true cost to the taxpayers to get rid of that property? What are the unpaid taxes that we're going to take over and pay at closing? What are the other, the closing costs? What are all the fees associated with that property that the taxpayers are now going to pick up to give that property away? Is it more than $25,000, less than $25,000? I think the taxpayers deserve to know that. The other thing that does concern me, you know, I give credit to Bridges of Hope for what they want to do, but we're going to be bringing people into our community from Montgomery County, from other cities, to that property. And there are costs associated with that that we are going to have to foot as taxpayers. So that's a major concern. I know it's a concern of residents that live around there with people that have addictions and whatnot being brought into our community. So I just really would like to know, you know, what the true cost is to the taxpayers. There's 80-some churches in the city, and I personally believe if the churches of the city of Xenia wanted this project to happen, it would have happened long, long ago with 80-some churches. So a little disappointed we didn't go with the private corporation for that property and try to make some money off that property, because it has cost us a lot of money over the last four-plus years. Thank you.
Anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please? Seeing none, we will move to reports of committees. We have none this evening, and then following items from city council and mayor. We have one noted item under there, an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you, Mr. President. There has been a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals since April of 2017. It has been advertised on the government channel, the website, Facebook, and mentioned at council meetings. We did receive a letter of interest from Ms. Mary Haller, and I did speak with her regarding her interest in serving and with her experience and knowledge. I am pleased to recommend her for the appointment to the term expiration date of April 11, 2021. Her background check has been done by the Xenia Police Division and is satisfactory. So if it is in order, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Mary Haller to fill a vacancy on the Xenia Board of Zoning Appeals with a term expiration date of April 11, 2021.
Thank you very much. I have a motion from the mayor. Sir, a second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wallace. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. I have two items that I would like to bring to council's attention and consideration this evening. As part of our executive session earlier this evening, we finalized some arrangements for contracts for our city manager and for what will be announced in a press release tomorrow, our next finance director for the city, and would like to request a motion for approval of a new five-year contract for our city manager that is, as we discussed in our executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mays. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wallace. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And now the second item before us is a contract for our next finance director, Mr. Ryan Duke, and I would seek a similar motion to put this on the floor.
Send it, Mr. President.
Moved by the Vice President. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order from my colleagues this evening, please?
Welcome aboard.
Yes. Congratulations, gentlemen, and welcome aboard. We are pleased to have your services for the next five years and then some, please. At this time, we'll move to reports of city offices. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight's first scheduled item is a recommendation to approve a final plat and subdividers agreement for Sterling Green Crossing Phase 2, an original plat for which was approved in 1993 and amended in 2010. As detailed extensively in the agenda report, the developer has worked to meet all conditions and requirements set forth by ordinance and policy. This includes requirements enacted in our updated zoning code. All parkland, utilities, and roadways are addressed, and appropriate bonding will be in place to ensure completion of such infrastructure. The subdividers agreement, final plat for Sterling Green Crossing Phase 2, have met the conditions required by the Planning and Zoning Commission and are therefore acceptable and presented to city council for approval. Given that the proposed subdivision received approval of a preliminary plat and approval of a final plat for its first section prior to the establishment of the city's fiscal impact analysis policy, the finance director and I have elected to waive that policy and its review requirements. We're excited to see continued growth in our residential sector to meet our growing community's housing needs. Staff therefore recommends city council approve the final plat for Sterling Green Crossing Phase 2 prior to completion of required public improvements and authorize execution of the subdividers agreement for Sterling Green Crossing Phase 2, which includes a requirement to post the financial guarantee that complies with Section 1238.03D of the City of Xenia Land Development Code. Also, want to just add, a lot of work has gone into making sure that our land development code is contemporary and providing the city with good expectations, good product. Brian Forstner's done a lot of work on that project, as well as projects like this that come forward, and council's to be commended for setting a high expectation, and this is a good reason why. We have these opportunities for growth, and we want good quality growth. So thanks to Brian and to council for making sure that we're doing just that.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, for approval of the final plat and the execution of the attached agreement?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by the Vice President. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Councilman?
I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask anyway and lead my next point. Who's responsible for the paving in the streets and his reception?
So pursuant to our requirements, those streets have to be completed. Streets and all utilities, as well as parkland dedication, are components of what needs to be done in order for that development to move forward. So the developer itself is responsible for completion of that.
Okay. And I've talked to you about the folks at New Mexico and Dundee. They've been waiting four years to have their street completed.
Yep.
So I would hope that we would look into getting it done.
Yeah, and as we've discussed, Councilman, and I've discussed with, I think, a couple other council members as well, we want to bring a solution to that area. Unfortunately, as a result of the economy and the housing conditions that tanked, some of those improvements were not completed. At the time, the city had an insufficient bond retainage to be able to complete the project, but as I talked with Councilman Lauterback earlier this week, we've heard from numerous residents, not just currently, but over the last couple of years, they've been polite about it, but they've been waiting long enough to get those streets completed. And so Public Service Director and I have had some discussions about how we can proceed with that. The key is, we want to get it done. The new developers responsible, and they've indicated they would do it, but we'd like to see it done this year. So we're looking at alternatives. I think with that is the point that with the changes in our land development code, we have a more robust ability to ensure that we have adequate bond retainage now moving forward, so that if we have to complete these projects, it's not coming out of pocket. There are actual resources there to be able to pay for that. Under our old code, that was not the case. So again, kudos to all of you, to Brian, to ensure that we've got that legislative infrastructure in place to be able to ensure that these projects are completed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next this evening, staff is recommending city council approve two measures needed to immediately initiate a traffic study intended to evaluate current and projected traffic conditions associated with the project drive commercial area. These actions include an emergency ordinance to provide supplemental appropriation in the amount of $20,363 for account 101-1555-53290 for the engineering service. And second, staff is recommending city council approve a motion to waive purchasing policy requirement of three cost quotes and authorize a contract with TEC Engineering to complete a traffic impact study for the Progress Center Development at a cost not to exceed $20,363. As always, it is our desire to seek out the best value in contractual services, and given a unique set of circumstances associated with this situation, we feel as though we can accomplish this as recommended. The agenda report details recent work and unique knowledge TEC Engineering has with regard to the traffic study in the Progress Drive area. By engaging this firm immediately, we'll be able to utilize the data collection that TEC has already compiled recently for other related projects and maximize their speed and efficiency in delivering a final traffic study report to the city. Timing is important with this. The situation, given the fact that recent momentum with the REACH project has indicated that they're likely to reach funding sooner than we thought, and because use of certain state grant dollars potentially this year could be impacted based on the final results of this new traffic study. For those factors, staff recommends approval of the two actions as stated.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, first, please, as an emergency, to request the supplemental appropriation?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills as an emergency. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mays. Discussion or question on this first motion, please? Councilman?
You mentioned REACH.
I think the citizens would like to know, where are we at with that project?
Yeah. It's a good question. We, in fact, have a couple of meetings coming up here in the next week with the partners and with the Capital Development Committee. The YMCA, in conjunction with the Senior Center, have launched a formal fundraising campaign. They've seen some good early successes with that. The campaign committee has identified a number of corporations, charitable groups, and individuals that they are in the process of reaching out to solicit dollars to help supplement and round out the needed total. We've gotten some excellent news from a couple of the key partners. The Dayton Foundation, a request had been made for a $75,000 grant from that particular charitable organization. They came back and said, you know, "We're not going to honor that $75,000. Instead, we're going to give you $225,000 toward the project." If that wasn't good enough, they do a monthly publication highlighting important projects, important news in the Dayton region called Good News Dayton. They want to feature the REACH project as their cover story for the month of July. I'll actually be participating in an interview next week as part of that. We've also gotten good news from Citywide Development, which is the funding entity with regard to these new market tax credits. They are utilizing, there are two forms of the tax credits, there are state tax credits and there are federal tax credits. Without getting into the intricacies of how those things work, just imagine it this way, the federal tax credits give you a greater yield return than what the state tax credits give you. So they're transitioning this project to make it all federal tax credits, and they're increasing the total amount. The net result of that is about a quarter million dollars in additional equity brought to the project. So those developments just occurred within the last week or so here, so that's a half a million dollars of that $2 to $2.5 million gap that was filled literally within a 24-hour period. So overall, the funding process moves forward. We feel very good about it. For this reason, we feel like there's a very good likelihood that some initial work will start there this year. We want to be out ahead of that if we need to make adjustments from an infrastructure standpoint, so we can accommodate the additional traffic that we would expect as part of, you know, a large development occurring out there.
And for the public's knowledge, where is that going to be located?
Be located on Progress Drive, next to the current location of Lowe's. Kettering Health Network has purchased that entire large parcel, used to be the nursery out there, and it, again, will house, once the project is completed, components for Kettering Health Network, a brand-new facility for the Xenia Y, a brand-new facility for our Senior Center, a satellite campus for Clark State University, a satellite campus and community outreach center with their land grant programs for Central State University, and an absolutely catalytic project for the city of Xenia to provide some core services in some very much needed areas.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And before I move along too quickly, thank you for the reminder, Mayor, let us have a second motion, please, as an emergency, to waive the purchasing policy, to move this along at the not-to-exceed amount of $20,363.
So moved as an emergency?
Moved by Councilwoman Mays as an emergency. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mills. Discussion or question on the second motion? Seconded by Councilwoman Mills. Discussion or question on the second motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Final scheduled item this evening pertains to addressing the disposition of the Simon Kenton Elementary School site. As instructed by City Council, staff has spent the last few weeks working through the due diligence process and discussing the sale of the property with representatives of Bridges of Hope. Provided to you this week were the draft purchase and development agreements and a general site plan indicating the easement area as identified in the ordinance and agreements, ostensibly for future roadway expansion and future relocation and replacement of fire facilities. Staff must engage representatives of Bridges of Hope hopefully one final time to ensure any remaining concerns with the agreements are addressed. But in general, we feel that we've incorporated City Council's wishes into an agreement that protects both the city and the site purchaser. As indicated in the agenda report, no action is requested of City Council this evening other than introduction of the ordinance for the sale of Simon Kenton to Bridges of Hope. As we proceed with this final discussion on the contracts with Bridges of Hope, if any material changes come about, we'll certainly make you aware of that well in advance of the second reading and final action of the matter. But, you know, again, we anticipate that the contracts are pretty close.
Thank you very much. May I have an introduction of the ordinance, please?
Introduce, Mr. President.
Introduced by many people. Let's give this one to Councilman Wallace, please.
Finally, I have just two updates this evening. One, I wanted to come back and provide a brief update. We had council authorize us to move forward pending evaluation of other options with the cemetery for indigent burials, and I promised that we would make sure that we did some due diligence, looking at wood lawn and make sure that, you know, whether that was a better alternative or not. So Steve Brodsky and I had the opportunity to meet with representatives from their board, and they're putting together a proposal. Should have that back to us within the next week or so. You know, we're trying to balance getting a good cost-effective option in place here with something that is dignified and something that is as long-term as possible. So if this seems to be a more cost-effective option, then certainly we'll come back and present that concept to council. So we'll hold an abeyance any action with regard to purchase of that property that council authorized until we get a better understanding. But again, you know, the third light to this is really want to make sure we get a long-term solution here. So again, we'll get the most cost-effective option and make sure we're positioned to move forward with that. And then finally, just another reminder of our fireworks festival on First Fridays, last council meeting before that event, planning pretty much complete for that event. We're very, very excited. Should be bigger and better than ever. I forget the total number of fire. I think it was like 13,000 and some shells. I'm looking for help. No one's, no one's nodding, but it was like 13.
Thousands.
Yeah, it was 13. Yeah, it's thousands of shells. So we anticipate a very exciting show. Again, all of the free activities at the park, plus all the activities downtown on First Fridays. It makes it a tremendously large and well-rounded event, so we encourage folks to come out July 7th, 5 till 10-ish when the fireworks will shoot off. We've got plans in place for parking contingencies. If we have any inclement weather, the decision to cancel and/or postpone the fireworks is actually on the fireworks company, not on us, but the rain date is Saturday, right? Same time, dusk, 9:30, 10-ish. So we'll carry all those activities over to Saturday if we need to, but we'll keep our fingers crossed and pray for a dry evening. So again, encourage folks to come out and participate. That's all I have.
And this is the company that puts on Cincinnati's?
This is Rosy, so they do, they are internationally known.
Thank you.
They do Cincinnati Reds, they do City of Cincinnati, a number of large cities in the region. They're one of the better-known, certainly in the Midwest, if not in the country and beyond.
Thank you. Anything for our city manager this evening, please?
I have one thing. I'm sorry.
Councilman Lauterback.
Yeah, for the public's knowledge, there's a little bit of confusion on the Bridges of Hope situation. If I understand it right, it's not a done deal yet. You, there was a three to two vote to move forward, to talk to Bridges of Hope. Since then, I've resigned from the Board of CAP, and one member abstained. So if I have this correctly, we will be voting on whether to move forward with Bridges of Hope, and then if not, we could go back to CAP or anybody else. Is that correct?
Yes. So what council's last action did was to instruct staff to move forward with the negotiation, which is what we are pretty close to being complete with. What we've presented tonight is the ordinance that would be required to completely effectuate that transfer of the property, so there would need to be an affirmative vote per charter for that land transaction. And inherent with the approval of that would be the authorization to sign off on those purchase and development agreements. So yes, there would be that additional second reading and affirmative vote that would be required to finalize that.
And we'd take four votes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else for the city manager, please? Thank you.
I did. I know that we had to cancel the last neighborhood night out, and I was wondering if there was a reschedule of that date for Cox Elementary.
Not at this point. We've reached out to the partners. We're looking at the potential of rescheduling, and I thought, I was looking real quick, because I thought we had, we are still waiting for a response from Xenia Community Schools because this one was hosted at their site, so just checking my email there. So we're waiting for a response there. If we can reschedule, we certainly will.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, sure.
Anything else, please?
I have one. I've heard nothing but really positive comments about this flash pad, how people are really enjoying that. I did have one concern that somebody asked. The water there, is it recycled? If it is recycled, is it filtered at all? I guess there's concern.
It's a fair question. Yeah.
People matter with babies with diapers hanging down to their knees.
Yeah. No, certainly it's a fair question. So if you recall back when we first were going through, or not first, but when we were going through the process of looking at different models and different approaches, there were two concepts that we raised. One is a recycled and filtered system, and the other is a straight one-off. This is that one-off system. So all that water that goes through, and we'll take a look this year, see how much water that actually was. But, you know, again, I would chalk it up as part of our recreation we provide. So no, that's all clean, purified city water that's coming through, which of course is a lot cheaper than county water. And, sorry, I couldn't help myself. It's probably inappropriate. I apologize. But no, it's clean water. And again, you know, we've heard just fantastically positive comments. If you go by there any particular day, afternoon, evening, it's, you know, there's dozens, literally dozens of kids. So, and again, we are still evaluating. The other request that came up was consideration of no smoking, designating some no-smoking areas. So we're evaluating that and would hope to bring something back to council here in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Anything else for the city manager, please? Seeing none, Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item this evening, scheduled bills in the amount of $469,075.92.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to pay our bills this evening?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor. Second?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice President. Any discussion or question on the bills, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Abstained.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Motion carried.
I need to change my vote to abstention as well.
So noted. Motion carried.
I would like to make one comment. I would like to commend this council for investing in the city leadership going forward. You've seen all these positive things that we've been talking about over the last couple of years. Those things do not happen in a vacuum, and I think there's a lot of work and a lot of visionary process that has gone on over the last number of years. And I think the team you have assembled going forward, and hopefully you will add one member to it here fairly shortly, will lead you in good stead for that future positive growth going forward. So just want to make that, make that comment.
Here, thank you. Anything for our Finance Director this evening, please? Seeing none, Mr. Law Director.
I don't have any ordinances or resolutions to read today, so I don't have nothing.
Thank you. Anything for our Law Director this evening, please? Seeing none, we'll move to reading of communications and discussion. Councilman Lauterback, please.
Thank you. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mays.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everybody that Xenia Scouts baseball has started. We are two weeks in, and I want to make sure everybody knows this is free college baseball. These athletes come from all over the country. The next home game is Tuesday, the 27th, 7:05 PM, Grady's Field. That's 1197 South Detroit Street. You can also get the schedule at xeniascouts.com. It is very family-friendly. You will have a good time, so I encourage everyone to come out for a game. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Wallace.
I wanted to just comment that my, one of my granddaughters from Boston was trying to make her, make sure that her grandmother got her into Xenia before the Fourth of July and before the fireworks and the First Friday for July. So I wanted to let her know that she got everything worked out so that she could get here next week before. So somebody is interested in being here for the fireworks and the Fourth of July festivities. Unfortunately, the Fourth isn't cooperating, so the Fourth is on, the fireworks is on the Fourth. But anyway, we'll, well, she'll be here through the Seventh so that she can see them. But anyway, I'm looking forward to the fireworks, and hopefully the weather will cooperate so that we can have great production.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mills.
Thank you very much. I'd like to remind all of our citizens of the city that we do have an open seat on BRACA, and that's the Board for Recreation, Arts, and Cultural Activities. You would be able to see our request on Facebook, the city website, the city government channel, and as of now, we are asking here on city council meetings also. It is a wonderful opportunity to give back, and that's, that's the best I can say. We've had a lot of partnerships, Sarah West, many of the people who have been hands-on with, with creating Easter baskets and creating different activities that we have enjoyed with our community. And I just want to encourage anyone that has a want to give back but doesn't quite know where to begin or where to start, send in a letter to Michelle Johnson, our city clerk, and that would be a wonderful way to be able to start and to maybe be able to find your place on the city Board of Recreation, Arts, and Cultural Activities. I would also like to say thank you to all the men and women who continue to give us as Americans our freedoms. So as we celebrate the Fourth of July this year, I want to also thank those who made it possible in the past and the present, and those in the future that will be continuing to make it possible. So please, everyone, have a safe and happy Fourth of July. And then again, First Fridays and our fireworks festival with the Sunny Cop program. The Shawnee Park activities actually starts at 4:00 PM. There'll be all kinds of activities down at Shawnee Park. Then make a trip into downtown Xenia, participate in First Fridays before you come back down to the park and watch the wonderful fireworks. There are so many activities happening, and, you know, when people say there's nothing to do in Xenia, I say you really haven't looked. There are so many opportunities here. So please come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you. I did attend the Customer Appreciation Day at the River Metals Recycling, and I get that invitation each year, and I've gone each year, and it's just absolutely wonderful. They provide, provide a great lunch. So if you have not been to River Metals Recycling, it's at 8:40 Jasper Road. It's a very clean operation, and they take all kinds of scraps, including cars. I was talking to one gentleman about some recycling and talking about how Xenia has really improved its recycling through Rumpke, and he said, yeah, I just, just scrapped a Rumpke truck. So, I mean, they take all sizes and shapes. And then Clark State had a welcome for the retired Air Force Commander Colonel DeVillier. It was held at a private home. He is their new Vice President of Business Affairs. As Commander, his annual budget was $300 million. So I think he can handle Clark State. So in his new role, he will serve as Chief Financial Officer. It was great to see him once again. Couple days ago, I attended the Colonel Young renovation meeting. They have a plan to do some renovations in the very near future. It was extremely exciting to hear about the plans for the property right there, which will have an educational and a financial impact on our community. Some of the plans include enhanced bike trails and amphitheater, areas for buses, overflow parking, vegetable gardens, barnyard areas, and renovations to recreate the original character of the home. And they are seeking input from the public. So they're, they have a website. I'm not sure, I think it's on Facebook, but anyway, they do want input before a final decision is made. But it's really exciting to hear the plans that they have for making that a great area. Then I also attended the Carnegie presentation. It was at the Green County Historical Society on yesterday, and Mary Ellen Armatrout gave a wonderful and very hopeful presentation for our Carnegie library. There are 111 Carnegie libraries just in Ohio, and so it was really interesting. And she talked about our library having some unique features that few actually have. One is that yellow brick. And so she was very hopeful that we would come up with a plan to keep and maintain that building. There was a presentation right here yesterday evening for the public. That's the second public meeting that was held, and so they are looking for input on plans for that building. So it's not too late. Share your ideas. We want to make something great with that wonderful building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Hey, Mr. President. I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one item, personal item, actually. Yesterday was my 31st anniversary with my wife Lynn, and I just want to publicly tell her how much I appreciate her and how much I appreciate the 31 years we've spent together and the three wonderful children we've raised here in Xenia, which we're very proud to be Xenians, and just how much I'm looking forward to watching the city continue to grow and enjoying all the pleasures of being married to, I think, the nicest woman I've ever met. So with, with that, I would seek a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wallace. Roll call, please.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.